It is six o'clock and I'll call the October twenty-fourth City Commission Meeting to Order. We'll begin with a roll call.
Mayor Hattasol.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two work session agenda items. The first one is animal ordinance review and recommended changes. Wyatt.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Wyatt Thompson, Assistant City Manager. This Jared is not the right PowerPoint. I don't want to talk about the contract tonight. We already did that. So let's see if we can go pull it up a different way.
That's better. Thanks.
Oh, tokenized.
All right, there we go. Animal licensing, animal shelter ordinances. As a quick background, you recall on September nineteenth, you authorized the mayor and the clerk to execute an agreement with Prairie Paws Animal Shelter to lease the animal shelter facilities and operate the shelter. And that change in our operational model requires change, certain changes to our ordinances to facilitate that transition. And so there's two sections that we'll talk about tonight in Chapter Six. The first, Article Two, Division Two relates to pet licenses. And in Section Six Thirty-Seven, the proposed change is to designate the third party, a third party, the ability to issue those applications and receive those applications for pet licensing. Right now, it says that the city or the city clerk does that, just expanding that to allow a third-party operator to be able to handle that process for the city. Section Six Thirty-eight, the change would be to set license fees administratively. Currently, those fees are listed in the ordinance. Our agreement with Prairie Paws allows them to set fees and the city to review those fees. And I do have those fees, that fee schedule at the end of the presentation, and we'll talk in more detail about what that looks like, but this, this is seeking permission to be able to set those administratively with that operator. And then we also clarify that service animals, as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, are exempt from the license fee. The ordinance currently says that dogs serving the blind or deaf are exempt from the fee. And the idea of notion of a service animal through the ADA is a bit broader than just dogs and just blind or deaf. So we want to align that with federal law to expand that ability.
Does it cover therapy dogs? I've been seeing them more often.
It does not.
Okay.
Service animal is a
Is not a therapy.
Is not necessarily a therapy animal, and the ADA makes that distinction. So, so this is only for those recognized animals. In Six Thirty-nine, that section, we would propose to eliminate responsibilities of veterinarians to voluntarily participate in the licensing program. There's a fairly extensive section and procedure that is outlined there where veterinarians can issue licenses or participate in the sale of those licenses on the city's behalf. And they are either able to charge that administrative fee for that at their place of business or sign the form, and if those get mailed in, then the city remits to them a dollar per license for helping facilitate the process. It's a fairly intensive process for customer service or animal shelter staff to administer. There are a few veterinarians in town that participate, not all, but a few that do send in licenses on occasion and participate in either or of those programs. As we consider the move to Prairie Paws to administer the program, they, they would be in charge of that revenue and those potential partnerships. And so if they were interested or another operator were interested in developing those type of third-party sale opportunities for licensing, those could be developed outside of, of our ordinances. But tying the city to that process when we're not running the licensing program anymore is the reason we would propose eliminating that from the, the ordinance tonight. The second article to, to review is our Chapter Six, Article Three, related to the animal shelter. And Section Six Fifty-One, the proposed change is to permit the city or a third party again to operate the animal shelter and kind of defines that notion of operator of the shelter rather than designated as solely the city. So it provides flexibility for our current situation where we have that third-party contractor. But it also allows for if we were ever to take it back over, the city would then become the operator of the shelter. And we've made that language consistent throughout these changes. Then, so it would allow that third party or the city to essentially run the animal shelter to accept and impound stray animals and accept animals surrendered by their owners. And then we would also seek to clarify that the City of Manhattan residents are exempt from surrender fees. That's been the longstanding interpretation and the longstanding practice where a resident of Manhattan could surrender an animal to the shelter without paying an eighty-dollar surrender fee. This, the change is, is a minor change in the words, just to make that very clear that City of Manhattan residents do not pay that fee. In Section Six Fifty-Two, we would
I noticed that it says, before you move on, just quickly. It says too that the operator of the animal shelter may accept dogs found running at large, but cats has been deleted. So it, and we're distinguishing there. Is that right? I mean, just to
We, we don't consider cats to be running at large.
You don't?
Um, you know, there, lots of people have indoor/outdoor cats. And so our, our practice has been to not pick them up and from an, from an enforcement standpoint in terms of our enforcement of that.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep. And then sorry, I lost my
You were ready for
Linda, appreciate the question.
Fifty-three.
Um, I think still in, in Six Fifty-Two, we would permit the operator then to administer those programs related to disposition of animals. So Six Fifty-Two relates to what happens to the animal once it comes to the shelter. This would give that operator the, the ability to administer those outcomes as they saw fit. We also added transfer as one of the possible options. So, you know, they could adopt that animal, they could transfer that animal to a different location or a different rescue operation or potentially euthanasia if that were warranted. And then also in, in Six Fifty-Two, we would remove the reference to animals running at large in Raleigh County. The city ordinance relies, would, current city ordinance would rely on Raleigh County to have such a resolution. They may or may not have that resolution that restricts animals from running at large or, or penalizes that now or in the future. And so this, this is an intent to focus the ordinance more on what we do control on the day-to-day. There's nothing to say that the operator of the animal shelter could not develop a relationship with Raleigh County to intake and manage animals that have come from Raleigh County. But that would be on the, on the operator and a contractual obligation, not necessarily one that has to be driven by the ordinance. In Six Fifty-Three, we would propose to eliminate the itemized fees for reclaims and impoundment and instead administer those fees administratively through, through the agreement with the operator. In Six Fifty-Four, we would permit the operator of the shelter to adopt animals that it owns as well as eliminate the minimum adoption fee. This was something that Prairie Paws had proposed in their original proposal to us subsequent to the RFQ. And really, this gives, this gives everyone flexibility to, to move or adopt out maybe those hard-to-adopt animals without restriction on a minimum fee, but also, you know, they're, they're, they're driven by revenue. And so I think the times they would, you know, I think they would price those animals based on what they saw fit. But this does offer a bit of flexibility when it is needed. And we would also require adopted animals to be spayed or neutered, except as permitted by state statute. You know, animals leaving the shelter now are spayed or neutered. This, this kind of clarifies that section, but then also allows for that exception which exists in state statute. And then we would propose eliminating the process, which is a lengthy process in the ordinance for adopters to pay a deposit. Instead of the spay-neuter, that would still exist, but that process is all defined in state statute. And so this, this aligns us with that rather than spelling out the process again in our local ordinances. So not, not a ton of changes here. It's, it's more, it's more cleaning up and alignment. We did want to discuss tonight this provision that no more than four animals in any twelve-month period may be adopted by any person or members of that person's immediate family. This is something that, that we haven't put to much use at the shelter, just in day-to-day operations. I think that, you know, in, in talking with Vanessa with Prairie Paws, she's raised some concern with some of their policies and practices and how they could be in conflict with this. For example, they're, they intend to have a barn cat program, and they might adopt multiple barn cats to a landowner who has maybe multiple land holdings, multiple barns, but a single address. And so they could very easily exceed four cats into those situations. Or the, they have a policy where they're trying to find the right animal for the right home. And so they would actually allow you to adopt an animal. If it didn't work out for whatever reason, return that animal and then try to find you the new animal that would work better. And there's scenarios where she could see that exceeding four, as you might try to adopt two or two, two during a year, but they didn't work out, and all of a sudden, we're at four or five. So also, I think the transient nature of our community could make it difficult to track a person or an address as well as defining the members of the immediate family. Puts customer service staff in somewhat tenuous position as they try to figure that out at the customer service desk. So we're, we're looking for feedback. I, I don't see a disadvantage to remove this and kind of manage this process administratively as well, but we did want to have that discussion tonight.
So is there some concern that people get more than four animals, they're doing something nefarious? They've got dog fights going on or something, or what, why would we put a limit on them to start with? What's the concern?
I suspect that, that the case you raise or, or hoarder situation are, are reasons why this may have been put into place. I think that those, there are other ways to keep track of that through, through a complaint or enforcement perspective or other questions that are, that are asked at the, at the time of that interaction rather than having a hard limit at, at four.
So we're, we're not going to discourage crazy cat women and crazy cat guys from getting eight or ten of them?
Correct.
Is there a limit in the city ordinance on the amount of animals you can, it's not related to this, but a separate ordinance?
There's a, a separate section of Chapter Six that limits to five animals. And more than five could, could potentially put you into a nuisance category, yes.
Yeah, so, so it's already covered, is what I'm saying?
It's already covered.
So I don't have a problem with taking this out?
Except chickens.
Except chickens.
Do you have six chickens?
Chickens are, are another section of the ordinance. We're not, we're not proposing changes.
No, I know.
Yeah, I'd say, take that out too. All right, Al, on to the next.
All right.
I do have a quest.
Yes.
In, of Section Six dash fifty-four, adoption, and I suppose it's Rachel more than anybody else. But the second sentence starts, "Only natural persons shall be allowed to adopt animals, and corporations shall not be permitted." I just, I've never seen the, and natural persons isn't defined. I've just never seen it in any of our ordinances before. It just seems strange, is all, so.
Yeah, we, we
I thought I'd ask.
We did discuss that.
I bet.
And there, it is a, it is a legal term. And I think it, it's a, the distinction is to, you know, from a business versus an individual. And I'm, I'm sure I'm butchering the, the legalese of, of this, but was, was that a, which section was that? Six fifty-four?
Six dash fifty-four, the second sentence. On the materials, I have the
Yeah.
The edited version. Anyway, I just wondered how.
Yeah, you can't be having Vietnamese restaurants.
So Ra- Rachel, you're, you're free to
You can't, you can't have
clarify if you want to.
You can't have, I don't know, unnatural persons.
I never can remember how the microphones work, so I'm just gonna
Just pick one.
I think you can stand there.
Yeah, you speak to either one.
Commissioner, that's a pre-existing language.
Okay.
And yes, Wyatt and I did talk about it. Natural person does indeed just mean an individual acting as a
Human, right?
As an, as an individual human, yes.
Okay, all right.
In the age of AI, that's a good distinction to make. But it, it truly just goes on to explain it. It's, it's some, someone, an individual, not a corporation, so.
And does that include children? I mean, you have to have a certain age or anything like, I mean, I'm just trying to, it, it's a, you could drive a truck through it, but
Sure. Well, I mean, a child is not necessarily not a natural person. But I think our process, our procedure has probably been to not adopt the animals to children because it's a kind of a contract. You can't
Yeah.
Can form a contract with a child, so kind of takes care of itself, I think.
Well, just, if you get to clean it up, you might take the opportunity.
That's a fair point, Commissioner. We can talk about that some more. It's a little confusing. I can understand why you pointed it out.
It's a different kind of way to describe adults.
It's, it's a new legal, new legal world we live in.
It's new or old?
Thank you.
I think it might be old.
Old.
Thank you for just considering it.
And the changes in Section Six Fifty-Five would be to propose eliminating the requirement for rabies vaccinations for animals released from the animal shelter. And it's not that we won't do that. The rabies vaccination is a part of the licensing requirement, which is required by, by our contract with the, with the operator. And, and so the, animals would still be vaccinated. I think the, the real purpose of eliminating the section is to eliminate this antiquated process for adopters to pay a rabies deposit where they could pay the shelter ten dollars that we would hold, and then they could go get the rabies vaccine somewhere else. And this was at a time when we, you know, we didn't have veterinarians on staff or on site to do that all the time. And so it was a way to move animals in, in a time where we didn't have that vet care. And then if they did that and they brought their form back, they'd get their ten dollars back. We had to hold the ten dollars. It, it, it was a, a process and a procedure. So, so the goal is to simplify that, still, still require rabies vaccinations just through a different method, through that licensing component rather than this particular section. So I wanted to bring up, we talked in both of the pet licensing and the next adoption, animal shelter section, about fees. And our agreement with Prairie Paws spells out, you know, that process for them to set those fees and the city to review those annually. There's also a, a process where Prairie Paws will present to you twice a year, both in the kind of mid-year budget time, to discuss the renewal of the next year's contract and funds allocated for that purpose, as well as an annual report to keep you apprised of the details of, of the operation and how things are going. So there's, there's at least twice a year where you could still provide input into their fee structure that we could then, you know, work with them to implement for that following year. So these are the fees that are proposed for twenty-twenty-four. The adoption, really everything except the license fees are the same as what we do now. And so there's, there's no changes there. The, the one area that they've proposed changes is in the license fee for altered animals. The current fees are six, twelve, and sixteen. And they have, I had a note, they've been that way. The six-dollar fee has been that way since nineteen ninety-seven when we implemented pet licensing fees. It used to be six, eleven, and fourteen. And so in twenty-eighteen, I think we increased a dollar for the, the longer license timeframes. But that six dollars has been the same forever. And then the unaltered animals, so the non-neutered or non-spayed animals, were increased in twenty-eighteen as well. But we're not proposing any changes to those. I think part of, part of the analysis that, that Prairie Paws has done and that, as in terms of their operation and that, and that we've done internally as well, looking at, at, you know, cost recovery of, of a licensing program. There's staff time, there's credit card processing fees, there's envelopes, there's paper forms that we use today that we might not use in the future. But the cost of our current operating program probably isn't recovered at a six-dollar per license fee. And so Prairie Paws has proposed ten dollars as a, you know, twenty and thirty as a way to recover more of those costs of administering the program.
So they, they will keep all those fees?
They would. They would administer the program and keep the revenue.
And it just gets the city out of the licensing business, correctly?
Correct. Correct. I did receive one phone call today from a concerned citizen who had read in the Mercury that we were considering this increase in those license fees. And she had pointed out that she, you know, had two cats and always had them licensed and, you know, had paid six dollars, twelve dollars a year for the two cats, you know, for as long as she could remember and was very concerned, you know, being on a fixed income, senior citizen, that increasing this to ten dollars would be a lot to ask for folks that have multiple animals in their home. I told her I would pass along that, that comment to you. That was the only feedback we received so far on this idea, but I did want to share that, that with you. So, so input on those fees tonight is, you know, is, if you have any, would be appreciated. But I know that Prairie Paws has built a fee to the city in their contract based on the idea that certain revenues will be generated on the backend through these fees. And so that, that does all balance out in terms of the effectiveness, yes.
Yeah, I got one question. The, the reason we did the licensing was to make the rabies vaccines work. So my, my question is, if you license your cat for three years, is there a three-year rabies vaccine?
There can be, yes.
Okay. And then that would have to be part of this, because I've, you know, I've got three of those critters running around, all of them from the shelter.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I get them a shot every year. I've never tried to do it for longer than that, so that's what the question was.
I think, I think certain vets will, veterinarians will offer twenty-four or thirty-six months, and it may depend on the age of the animal, or that maybe for cats or dogs, that those are medical questions. I don't know exactly, but, but when they submit that application for a three-year license, they provide proof that they received a, that the animal received a three-year rabies vaccination. So there is that cross-check to make sure that they're paying the correct fee.
And then, then the, the increase, you know, I understand, you know, four dollars, like I said, I've got three of them. So I guess my cost goes up just a little bit. But, but when I looked at, you know, our operations on licensing, we'd, we'd have to raise this anyway, even if we weren't giving it to Prairie Paws, because we weren't recovering the amount. And that was, that was the reason we tried to get the vets involved a few years ago. You know, to actually take the licensing, hoping that would increase the number and lower our cost. But apparently, it didn't work. So, you know, that's why you're recommending getting rid of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, how cumbersome is the licensing process? Is it more than a two or three-minute deal? Or you talk like there's a certain amount of time and energy and stuff, and we were paying the vets a dollar to do it. Is it, is it a big deal? What do you have to, to get licensed, what do you have to do? Show a, show a rabies card, pay, pay ten bucks, and you're out the door in thirty seconds? Or is it like five minutes of entering your social security number and the, the dog's birth date and all kinds of stuff like that?
So I can speak to our, I can speak to our current process, which is a, a paper form. You can pick it up at your vet's office potentially, or you can get it from City Hall. Fill out, you know, information about your, yourself and your pet, and then attach the rabies certificate that you get from the veterinarian or have them sign the form that, you know, swears that, that they gave the shot to your, to your animal. Then you either mail that in or drop it off at City Hall or Process, and City Hall or the animal shelter can process the payment. I think the, the administrative side of that is, is that, I mean, there's a couple of minutes in that transaction if it's face-to-face or opening the letter and whatnot. There's, there's, you have to enter that information into our database. So we send out reminders, or we, we used to send out reminders. I think we're, we're in the process. If we were continuing to operate this, we would need to be more efficient at sending out those reminders on an annual basis to recoup that cost and then whatever the, or to encourage a relicenser. There's administration of that database software. There is, you know, whatever, we currently provide self-addressed stamped envelopes to the veterinarians' offices that are, that cost isn't necessarily recouped. I think the goal, if, if we were to continue to run it, it, you know, we would have looked for some way to go online to reduce some of that. That increases our cost on our credit card transaction side, whereas a lot of it now is, is check or, or cash. So I think moving forward, Vanessa is here tonight, Cowie is here tonight. She could speak to how Prairie Paws intends to administer the program and where she sees potential efficiencies, but also why she feels like the, these fees are more appropriate.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mark, or you?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, a couple of questions, actually. At the bottom of this chart says it's to be determined what residents outside the city would pay. And will we see that again, or will you let us know when that's determined?
We can certainly let you know when that's determined. I, I think that's, that's really dependent on Prairie Paws' success in generating contracts with outside entities and how those contracts are negotiated. Currently, it's eighty dollars regardless of where you are. And so I could see that potentially being a starting number.
I think the issue would be for those entities that don't negotiate or do not have an agreement. If eighty is the current agreement.
I think Prairie Paws will need to will need to set that number and then adjust it based on agreements that they, that they have. Because that surrender could come from anywhere. I mean, it could, you could be, you could live in Salina and choose to surrender your pet in Manhattan. And there's, is some fee to do that.
The other question I had, I know that we discussed at length the compliance rate with getting, people getting licenses for animals. And it was ten percent, and I think I heard that it went up to fifteen percent. But is there any strategy? Have you had discussions about how to improve that number? Otherwise, anyway, let me have you answer that.
Our, our number of licenses, you know, is in the twelve to fourteen-hundred range. The percentage comes from trying to estimate the number of pets in Manhattan, which is, you know, there's no census of pets. So that's a, that's a best guess. And the percentage may be higher, but, but twelve to fourteen-hundred pet licenses annually is about where we've, where we've been running. I think that, I think, you know, again, I would, I would refer to Vanessa's specific strategies. But, but we've talked about, you know, long-term, you know, potential microchipping programs, tying microchips to the licensing program. Some communities do offer lifetime licenses, and those are things that I don't think we're ready to engage in just yet. But I think those are opportunities that could be explored in the future. I think an online presence would help. I think better marketing would help. I anticipate Prairie Paws will be very vocal and very out there in their communicating themselves and introducing themselves to the community. Perhaps other, a different way to partner with, with veterinarians could increase the, that participation. The current one, the voluntary program, you know, didn't have great traction, I would say. It, it did sell some, but I think, I think there's opportunities with Prairie Paws' leadership to expand that.
So we're turning the entire administration over to Prairie Paws?
They
So a citizen who has an issue would not come to, the city administration would not come to the city commission? They would go to Prairie Paws?
Correct.
And there's no appeal beyond that?
Prairie Paws will provide monthly reports
Okay.
on a variety of aspects of their operations that, you know, will be shared with administration and could be shared with the commission if, if they desire. Ultimately, you know, they are working for us. And so if there is a, a question or about their application of policy or procedure, or, you know, they make everybody mad, I mean, we're, we're not going to turn a blind eye to those kind of situations. So yes, I would anticipate if, if they can't resolve it themselves, you know, we as staff or you as commissioners would hear about those type of situations.
I think it would make sense to provide the commission with reports for six months, a year. I don't know how long, but just for a period of time until you get a feel for what's working and what's not.
Yeah. And as a reminder, that, you know, they'll have a, a report to the commission in June. And as a reminder, that, you know, they'll have a, a report to the commission in June or July in that budget timeframe, and then again in December of next year, so.
So that's twice a year.
Twice a year where someone will be in front of you with, you know, written documents or, or presentations on how things are going.
Okay. I think you headed off the worst one with the cats.
Yeah.
Cat owners.
So this evening, we've already gotten into a little bit of feedback and direction on these two sections of the ordinance related to licensing and the animal shelter. Pending, you know, this discussion tonight, our, our goal would be to return to you in November with a first reading of that ordinance, follow-up in December with that second reading, and then make that effective date of these changes to align with Prairie Paws taking over the shelter operations, which is planned for December 24th, 2023. And then we would also anticipate returning in the winter, so either later, late this year or first of next year, to discuss additional ordinances related to animal control and enforcement. So things like chickens and other things that we've talked about that aren't in these two sections. So we think there's changes there as well to have, have discussion about. But happy to entertain other questions or discussion.
I'm good with what was presented. I think it makes sense. The idea here was to make it more efficient, streamline it, and save the city money, and I think we're headed the right way.
Well, we have Vanessa come up and you can let us know what you've been up to and your opinion on some of this.
Thanks so much for having me. Vanessa Cowie, Executive Director for Prairie Paws. Wyatt touched on a lot of, a lot of my points, you know, we've talked about this a lot, is that licensing program really is running at a loss, and the margin on those, if any at all, is so narrow. And it is staff time, they take a long time to generate a license, you have to create a profile for the pet owner in the software, you have to create a profile for every single pet, then you have to enter all of the vaccine records for every pet, and then you have to generate the license. And, you know, printing that, credit card processing fees are getting higher all the time. So unfortunately, you can run it as lean as you can, but it, because there's not enough of them being sold, which is a compliance issue, and then the margin being so small, you know, we get to the point where we just have to increase the fee at some point. But I think if we can improve compliance and sell a higher volume of these, then I hope we wouldn't see another fee increase. And that's, I think that's the goal, is that this, hopefully, we won't see another one of these soon. Ways to increase compliance is to do some amnesty events where we can give away free licenses at the time that we maybe do a free rabies vaccine clinic. Everyone that comes to our free rabies vaccine clinic maybe could get a free license at the cost of our organization, but that gets them in the database. That gets them receiving the reminders, it gets them getting all the renewals, and we can then kind of retain them. So sometimes it's about spending money to get them, and then you get to retain that, that database a lot longer. And it's in our interest to have a big database of pet owners, because that's how we fundraise, that's how we market, that's how we promote a lot of things. So we are incentivized to grow the compliance for those reasons. I unfortunately don't see a way that you can run this program much longer without increasing that fee, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got no problem with it, so. Any other questions? Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
All right, is that it for that topic?
That's, I think, the, all, all I needed, yes.
I suppose we ought to see if there's any, we didn't ask if we were going to have public comment, but if there's anybody from the public care to comment on these discussion items concerning ordinance reviews and changes, please come forward, state your name. You'll have five minutes. Okay, enough of that, then. We'll move on to item B, which is floodplain management plans, the annual progress report. Bill.
Hey, look at that. That's your right presentation.
That's right.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the annual floodplain management review. However, it's the first one for me to give that. Chad Bunter, of course, kept you all informed with many floodplain management initiatives and items before, and I've been pleased since about a year ago, August, to be able to take that role and continue with the city in our floodplain management program. It's important for us to share with you kind of an overview of the floodplain management plan in general. It's also a specific requirement under the community rating system program that we're under, and that is the program that recognizes the extra steps that the city goes to and translates that into a discount for flood insurance policies. So it's a very important part of our mitigation plan is to stay and be strong in the community rating system. And of course, like any rating system, the auditors come from time to time to check in, and our audit is in a couple of weeks, actually. They'll be here in November to look over the, the program that we have. So the, the management plan is a, is a big topic, and floodplain management itself is a big topic, and so there's many different pieces to it, including the mitigation activities that we take to try to help build the resiliency of our community. So tonight, we're going to talk a little about the CRS, Community Rating System. We're going to review the three main plans that we use to kind of organize and sort our thoughts on, on steps that we can take and give some progress, both on established programs, some recent highlights, and some upcoming priorities. We have indicated that we would take public comment tonight, so I don't know if we will have that or not, but we would ask that we accept public comment. And really, we take, we'll take public comment anytime. We want feedback, we want to know from the community what's working and what they would like to see us improve upon. So.
Mayor, I move that we accept public comment if anyone's here that wants to speak to it.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, as Vaneudin seconded to take a public comment on this item, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Hattasol.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, onward.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we are a member of the National Flood Insurance Program, and that's really the foundation of how flood management is handled. The ability of individuals to insure their own property and to have some control over those decisions and be able to know that even if there is a flooding threat that is particular to their property, that they can get insurance, is extremely fundamental to floodplain management. The private insurance industry finds it very easy to classify flood risk, and so in the 60s, the federal government really had to step in and create this foundation of a national flood insurance program. One of our mitigation activities is to work with insurance agents, real estate brokers, and banks to help facilitate communication about flood insurance. There's lots of myths, there's lots of misunderstandings about who can get it, when you can get it. And so a continuous process of educating on flood insurance is an important part of the program. And then planning, that helps us organize. There's so many things you could do, but strategically, what are the ones that will help us here in Manhattan with the type of flood risks that we have? Which are the ones that will help us build resiliency over time? The community rating system, right now, we have a rating of a six, and that is actually quite good. There's one five in Kansas, I think maybe one other six, couple of sevens, couple of eights. But, so we're in, we're in a, in a recognized level based on the work that has been done. And the way that works is, based on a rating of a six, all flood insurance policies automatically have a 20% discount built in to what the standard rate would be. And each one of those steps equals a 5% change in the, in the discount available. So, so 20% is a good number. The, what that community rating system does, though, is it sets up a point system and a lot of incentives, and we're right in the middle right now of calculating our points and writing up our program, preparing for the auditors. There are so many different directions that we do some work in to try to help mitigate. But having a mitigation plan, having this foundation is a key part of that. So, and, and checking in with you all from time to time to, to explain that. The basic mitigation plan for the city of Manhattan is the multi-hazard, multi-jurisdictional plan that Riley County, as emergency manager, is our liaison to the central Kansas region, which is seven counties in north-central Kansas. And those plans are really governed by FEMA. There's a lot of framework that FEMA provides in the State Division of Emergency Management. Every five years, those get renewed, so 2025 is the next year we will be fully participating. Fire Department is kind of the city's lead for a lot of those mitigation planning. Related to this main plan, there has been a lot of work we have done in Manhattan on particular watersheds. So you're all familiar with the Wildcat Creek resiliency, both the original plan that was adopted in 2013, as well as the additional work that was done 2019 through 2021. We also did a Big Blue and Kansas Rivers floodplain management plan in cooperation with the counties and the Army Corps of Engineers that had recommendations. And so we keep track of where we are on those checklists of things that we are working on, and that's primarily what I want to share with you today, is just some highlights of where we are in those plans. Information about the city's plans, about flood risk in general, is on our website at Know Your Flood Risk. So if you Google Know Your Flood Risk Manhattan, or the URL is up there, that is our homepage for floodplain information. Established programs, we've talked about insurance, floodplain permitting, the ability to provide input and governance over new construction so that, you know, we, we have older homes that, that have risks there, but at least we can try to grow our way out of some of those recognizable risks as we go forward. Outreach through residents, insurance agents, realtors, and loan officers. As you all know, we have been very proactive in hazard mitigation grants to do strategic buyouts of properties for which that's the best way to remove the risk and also help with our emergency response efforts. And, and we have completed nine property purchases since 2016, and that equates to 20 dwelling units in total that have been acquired. And as you know, we have a couple of projects that are ongoing right now. In fact, we opened bids today for the next single-family home demolition that, that we were authorized to do. And that is cost share, so we get 75% typically from the federal government, sometimes a little more in COVID, they bumped that up, we're back to 75% federal, 25% city, and the Stormwater Utility Capital Fund is where the city's local shares come from. A lot of words on this slide, so we'll just slide through those. I think many of you know most of this. You know, we do have higher standards in our regulatory program, primarily related to those areas where we have future conditions, floodplains established, and we have better input on risk, or where we don't have those future conditions, we have a foot higher elevation standard than the state of Kansas. We require two foot above the FEMA floodplain. We did a number of modeling efforts from 2016 to now and have been able to use that data in multiple ways, some which we probably didn't even foresee when we did them. And as time goes on, we are able to respond to risks better because we have a better understanding and can quantify them more. The 2D Wildcat Creek flood model has actually been used for things beyond flooding. It helps give us insight on the stream bank stability issues and other types of work. We have hazard warning systems, so voice alerts from, you know, large speakers that are installed along Wildcat and along the Big Blue River. We continue to test those, and that's the fire department that really has the lead on monitoring those. And we do public outreach, we're working on additional public outreach. And then it's important on floodplain management for, for there to be a benefit back to those floodplain areas. So they're not great for building houses down low, but the trails and the recreational aspect is wonderful. And so the more we can use our floodplanes as assets and think of them that way, the better the context overall. Recent activity, as I just mentioned, we have two property buyout grants in progress, so 925 Village Drive, we have acquired that property and opened bids today. The Garden Grove Apartments is a little more complex project, and so we're finalizing some things with the arrangements there, but that project is continuing to move forward. And that one features the ability to protect a number of folks that really might have limited mobility or means otherwise to respond to a flooding event. And depending on commission input, you know, we, we continue to get notices of grants, and we continue to maintain a priority list so that we have the ability to continue in that program. As you know, we have the Manhattan Levy Project underway, and that's really a two-phase effort. The current phase, which is the majority of the work, is well underway. And then we have the railroad gap by the Big Blue River that still requires a separate contract and permitting effort. And so Manhattan Levy is a critical piece of investment, over a billion dollars of infrastructure, not to mention the safety aspects, and so we're really pleased that that project's continuing.
Well, Bill.
Yes, sir.
On the, where else are you thinking there might be more buyouts? More along Wildcat Creek, like down by the apartments that you bought the 112plex out already, or west of Car Museum and that area? Where, where might we still have more FEMA buyouts of flood-prone property?
So in terms of areas that have had previous buyouts or have been identified with risk, you know, there are still additional homes that are, you know, at the same or similar risk to homes that we have purchased before. And then along the Big Blue River, there's also floodway and higher hazard areas there that we've had some, some feedback with. The buyouts are purely voluntary, so it's somewhat dependent as well on property owners recognizing their own risk and recognizing a willingness to participate.
So we're not making people sell or anything, they have to be willing to sell because they don't want their house to flood again in order to participate? They have to, yeah.
Absolutely.
You can't force anybody out just because it flooded once.
Yeah, it's, it's a core tenet of the federal buyout program that they are absolutely voluntary, and they're, and not just voluntary in name only, they're very serious that there be no coercion, no, you know, no sense that this is anything other than a voluntary opportunity.
Okay.
They're on the casement curve from 1993. One neighbor took a buyout and the one next door didn't. So, you know, that house may, someday it could flood again, and that owner might then decide to go ahead and take a buyout. So it's, it's ever so much voluntary.
That's right. Some other recent activities, so if you noticed the Turnaround Don't Drown signs that are on Anderson and in some of the neighborhoods adjacent to Wildcat Creek, those were installed several years ago. As you know, we adopted the Manhattan Development Code, and that led to additional reorganization of the floodplain, but it also added some clarity on open spaces and natural watersheds, all of which helped with mitigating future flood risks. We have adopted updated stormwater management criteria that we spoke with you about in August. That's actually been issued and begins in effect for development submittals on November 1st. And as you know, we are transitioning the day-to-day responsibility for floodplain management and community development to Public Works, but it's very much a partnership between community development, Public Works, and risk reduction on how we administer our floodplain program.
Does that mean your position is, you're in Public Works, you're not in community development?
That's, that's correct. I'm in Public Works.
So your position has always been, or in Public Works, right?
So in, in August of 2022, the ordinance still keeps all of the authorities in community development, but Stephanie delegated to Public Works and then to me, the day-to-day responsibilities to act as the city's floodplain administrator, so.
Thanks.
And I also have tonight with me Jordan Knight, who is our stormwater officer. And Jordan is basically the acting deputy floodplain administrator and is helping greatly with that program. And this really blends well. We have the stormwater quality program and erosion control and other things, so we're out paying attention to construction already. So coming, coming up, we have the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan, will be an active participant. The resilient Wildcat Creek plan, because of COVID and staff transitions, I don't know that we really landed that. There were a number of really good recommendations and started to move towards, but we do want to come back in 2024 and, and bring that to a nice closure, make sure that we capture the good that we did there, and, you know, honor the time and effort that was put into that process. You all did include a tenant notification program in the ordinance revisions with the MDC. However, we have not actually implemented that, and there's obviously a lot of discussion and conversation about the best way to do that and partner with the, with the rental community, and that's something that we just don't want to do hasty or, or, you know, haphazard. So we will work on that in 2024 to get that ordinance requirement in place. And then expanded public outreach and engagement. We just cannot do enough to help people understand this program. And so with that, I would take both questions from the commission, as well as if there's any public comment.
Any other questions?
So you said you have your audit in two weeks?
So you said you have your audit in two weeks?
Yeah, November 8th is when our auditor comes to visit, so.
Is it like this review part of a checklist to have done for your audit?
Yes, presentation of an annual update on this is one of the program requirements.
Because I was thinking it would be nice to do this after the audit because we could review the audit, but I thought this is probably something you have to do for the audit. But I assume we'll get some report afterwards.
Yes, we will report back on how our visit goes. We probably won't find out right away if there's things, but. And I say audit, it's actually a very collaborative. They're interested in our success and have been very helpful in preparing us for this.
Thanks. Through COVID, it was kind of all quiet. Not much was happening, and, you know, we had trouble even filling positions, I remember. But we were very active with the Wildcat Resiliency Group that included the Blue prior to COVID, and COVID just kind of shut down everything. And so I've been following anything, I say I go to all things flood, so I'll be coming in 2024. But I live in Northview, and it flooded, of course, in 1993. And I'm probably, I'm the only commissioner, I would imagine, that has flood insurance, and so I appreciate the 20% discount. I think it was over, it's about $450 a year right now. And I'm lucky because I'm in the 500-year flood plane. When, in 93, I wasn't in a flood plane at all. But then, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago, I was, my neighborhood was assigned the 500-year flood plane. And, but I have kept insurance, just you don't want your home as a major investment to ever be at risk. So Know Your Risk is a good title for the program. I know, and you said that you're going to be working on it more. One of the things that the Resiliency Group wanted was to have some little markers for where the flood line was in 1993. And I, you know, we agree with you about, don't go, you know, like the signs you had. We were very supportive about, don't go to this area because, you know, don't be in a flooded area. But I think when people are considering where they're going to move and buy a house, their major investment. In my neighborhood, there are houses, you know, they, when they built the development, they dug the streets down, and so people think they live on a hill. And the creek that, or the river is right back there and can, you know, if we ever had a 10-inch rain, we would be, we would find out where all of those are. And, but, you know, being in a drought, we forget about it from year to year. It's not something on our minds at all. But in 2018, when Wildcat Creek was raging, and we hadn't had that, I don't think anybody had a memory of ever, Wildcat Creek ever flooding like it did then. And of course, Tuttle Creek is an imposing threat as far as I'm concerned. It is 50% silted in, and I know that the Army Corps of Engineers are going to try something experimental with regard to the silt. But I still think that 50% is a danger and for everybody in this community, or at least in the low-lying areas that Tuttle Creek could affect, certainly not the hills to the west. But I think I'm only going to move one time, and it's going to be to a hill because I've lived in Northview now for about 50 years. So I've felt that imposing threat for a long time. And there have, there were people who moved out of Northview. Even though their house didn't exactly flood, the water came so close, and it was really a threat. So I would just, I, any progress we make, I hate it when we, and not COVID, nobody can. You know, it's just a fact that we lost a lot of ground in traction with the COVID years, and this kind of fell off to this lower priority. It had, after 2018, it was a big priority. And then COVID, with COVID, it kind of lapsed again. So just to say that people who live in the low-lying areas are paying attention. And so I want us to keep making progress. And so I'm supportive of what you're doing and the programs the city is doing, and hope that we will keep moving forward.
Thank you.
That Wildcat Resiliency thing that we worked on years ago, the number one thing, we need to speed up figuring out that tenant notification plan because that was high on the list. And I think back to, you know, one of the news reporter, people from K-Man, old Nick McNamara. He moved into town, and after he'd been here less than six weeks, he was in Garden Way Apartments, which fortunately we just bought out. And he ended up getting flooded, and when they rented him the place, they said, oh, look, it's newly renovated. That's because it had flooded before, the year before, and he was never told. And so that's the thing that troubles me the most, is we need to let people clearly know that, you know, you're in the flood plane, and chances are, you, you know, we get a five-inch rain, and you're close to Wildcat Creek, you know, over there on Scenic Drive, those flooded also. We just need to make that public. And I know if you're, if you own that property and you're trying to rent it, you don't like that plan, but it's necessary that we do that, and I'd like to see that speeded up.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate the feedback on that.
We need one more city commissioner to say that. That's two, we need a third one. They listen for three.
Speed it up, okay. All right, let's throw it open for public comment. If anybody would like to comment on the flood plane management plans that were discussed here, please come forward, state your name, and you have five minutes. Come on up. You'll need to sign in, and then you can state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Fran Swan, and I ride a bike quite a bit. I'm just curious to know, I know when we had the really bad storms, I don't remember what year it was, 86 or not 86, but it'd been a long time ago. There was a lot of flooding, especially along Wildcat Creek along this side, and cars even were bopping and everything. It, we, my husband passed away five years ago, but he had a dental office down there behind Walgreens. And we had just finished remodeling, and I kid you not, it was three feet off the front doorstep. And we just took a deep breath and went, ah, because that was just shocking. So consequently, it didn't flood us, which was great. But what are the proposals and stuff? Because I know when I cut over to go to Annenberg Park and stuff, they're doing some widening and some clearing of the creek bed there on the, I guess it's on the north side, northwest side of Anderson where the creek goes under the road. Do you know what precautions and things are being put into play for potential problems? I know this is wonderful, what we have going, but I mean, do we look ahead to look at that possibility? Because we haven't had a really bad rain for a long time. So that is my question. What other proposals are going on to where it takes into, to where they're? They told me, the people that live there told me that the city has come out and that they're widening the creek bed and cleaning it out and everything so that it doesn't get blocked to prevent problems. Are they doing that all the way along the biking trail, along linear trail, or is it just in that one area?
That is Little Kitten Creek.
Little Kitten Creek, thank you.
Yeah, and so they're going to do that there because it's eroding away some of the ground that's exposing the sewer. So I, that is a limited project for north of Anderson, a block or so, or a block or two. I don't know if there's any other plans along Wildcat Creek for anything like that. That's to stop some of the problems there before it gets into Wildcat Creek.
Okay, well, a lot of times, there's a lot of trees that are old and dying. I mean, it's great if you have a lot of fish, but we don't have a lot of fish. And the point is, do you all ever consider bringing in the school systems, like the older kids, and giving them projects to where they can somehow learn, earn some time or some skills about doing things like that where they give back to the community? Do we ever do anything like that to help them clean and?
We'll keep asking questions, and we'll try to answer them when you're done.
Well, that's about all for now, I have other questions, but not pertaining to just the flood plane.
Okay, all right, thank you. I don't know exactly what our, what our plans are. We tend to not use volunteer to do anything of significance, but I don't know, that doesn't mean that if a certain project arose that we couldn't seek out assistance from and provide a great learning experience, community service hours type of things, which a lot of schools are now requiring from their students before they graduate. But we can, we'll take that under advisement there.
Thank you.
Okay, Fran, thank you. All right, anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Bill, if you want to wrap things up here, or just call it good and we'll move on?
Well, no, I will, I will get with Fran after this because one of the intents of the program is that we reach out and talk with people individually about individual circumstances and share that information that we have. So I'm glad Fran came tonight, and I will reach out with her. And if you come across other constituents that you feel like, you know, I'm sure the city might be able to explain some of this, please feel free, and I know you do, to direct them our way. That's part of our mission.
Okay, very good. All right, that's it for item B on the work session. We'll move into the city manager briefing, is that you or is Ron on the line? Okay, he is on the line.
Ron, your audio is not working very well. Yeah, you got a helium balloon in you, and we can't, yeah, it's just going really fast and squeaky. So you might want to check your mics.
There we go.
One, two, is that better? All right. Thank you, good evening commissioners. So a couple of things I wanted to visit about this evening is the upcoming joint city-county-county meeting on Thursday. That's here in City Hall. The county, it's actually the county's turn, and they're kind of called the plan together for that. They'd like to, the single subject item is Seco Park. And they've indicated they'd like for each of the three entities, the city, the school district, and the county, to spend about 20 minutes talking about kind of what they see for the future of Seco and what that kind of means to folks. And so I wanted to, we haven't really had a chance to talk about that as a group. And I'm certainly willing to lead that conversation. I know the mayor's got a conflict Thursday, so I certainly would welcome other commissioners to have some say. I would just offer that there's a lot to cover in 20 minutes. But one of the things that we've had a history of with Seco is that we have had a good history of cooperation and collaboration. I think the city's probably been one of the bigger developers of Seco from, since its original history. We've worked with the county to do the swimming pool as part of that complex. That was part of the Quality Life Bond issue in 87. And also, we've worked with the county to do the sled hill when we were also working with the school district to utilize a big chunk of their land to do more onsite detention. So covers that stormwater for all the stormwater issues to try and slow some of that water down below Seco that went through those tributaries. We also have worked with the school district to locate the tennis courts on school district property, the skateboard park on school district property. And then we all equally share in the cost of renovating some of the walking paths and other paths throughout the park and some of the other improvements. So I think it's good that we point out that history. We've done the traffic signal at Kimball and Candlewood, and just some of those periphery things that we rely on. And then, you know, I think specifically what we've tried to convey, and I certainly think Wyatt's done a good job of conveying that is that, you know, we have a recent mandate by our voters to upgrade our, the original ball diamonds for that facility with an eye towards benefiting the school district as well, as well as expanding the tennis court. So we'll need to continue to have that kind of cooperation. And we think there certainly is opportunities for folks to participate in those on the edges or even beyond the edges. So we just want to kind of continue to convey that attitude of what we feel like we're needing to do based on what the voters approved. And then also, at the same time, is there some way we can help the other, the school district and the county on any of those aspects that are related to their operations or their facilities? So we're pretty limited in that role, but that was kind of the tact I was going to suggest we take. But if you have other thoughts, I think it'd be good to talk about those so we can convey those as well on Thursday.
So Ron, so besides the Seco Park improvements that were discussed when we chose a contractor, design, and all that stuff, we have no plans on anything else other than the 40, 50 yards around the current Seco Park ball fields and stuff, right?
Right, that's the major theme of that. I mean, there might be some issues that come up as they get into that design, but more than likely, most of those won't be able to be addressed, at least from a construction standpoint relative to what's on our plate to improve. So certainly would yield to Wyatt if he has some other comments, or Jason?
Yeah, Wyatt took off, but my other question.
Obviously, in the last, I don't know, six, nine months, there's been a lot of discussions about Seco. You can even go back years when Tracy Anderson and their firm, along with McCown Gordon, we went through an indoor aquatics study. Seco was identified as one of the potential sites. The park has been thrown around for a lot of different conversations, a lot of different improvements. The school district works with the county, they use their property all the time. We're on each other a lot for a lot of different reasons. It's, I don't think it's anything unusual. I just think there are people out there pushing for some change, primarily on the county's property because it's the most in the park, and it has the most vacancy in the park. So I think they're getting some pressure, and I think they're getting a lot of conversation. The chamber is engaged, wants to see some planning by all three entities. So I don't know if that's where Catherine's coming from in terms of just looking for input and feedback on where folks are at these days. Wyatt's given that group obviously a presentation. I don't think they want to see that again, but if they do, then, you know, Wyatt's willing to do that.
What is their, there's some, something in the paper about they're concerned about the parking lot or something. Whatever part of that west of Seco ball field parking lot, if we paved it, what's the downside to the county if we made some of that?
Yeah, some of the feedback, I mean, the trailers, the big rigs, the things that bring the livestock in, they don't want turning around on concrete or asphalt. They say it'll rip it up. They actually prefer it be on loose gravel or even the grass area, which that's an area where they park a number of trailers and units that hold the livestock themselves. So, yeah, they have their reasons as to why it's gravel and as to why it's grass. And, you know, I think that's, that we just simply give direction to our consultants who are looking at Seco, that if that's not their preference, then we'll figure out parking another way.
So how much of that parking west of Seco is ours?
Not much, I mean, if you take the extension of Candlewood through Seco, that's pretty close to the line.
So not much at all?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Ron.
Other thoughts commissioners have relative to that? Does that sound like a good strategy for Thursday?
My thought on that was, you know, based on what the voters approved, we have to stay focused on, you know, the city money. focused on, you know, the city money is going to the ball fields. And I just get the sense that people think it's wide open, that you can spend it on, you know, fairgrounds and things like that. And the answer is no. It specifically said trails, ball fields, tennis courts. And that's where we're at. Now, I have no problem if the county or the school board wants to partner with us and expand and do something else, but they're going to have to pay for it. You know, that's not in the city budget. That's going to have to be their piece of it. But we might be able to get some, you know, some money savings by building that all together. And maybe, you know, I can see that being part of the conversation Thursday.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I do, they have had some discussions about, you know, developing a master plan for the park. And so, again, that's something that could certainly be done. I mean, the playground area gets quite a bit of use. There's obviously vehicle encroachment from the tech college periodically. So there's, there's a lot of, lot of different uses over there. And, you know, Poter, Potter Hall is a wonderful facility. And it's, they've done some improvements to it over time. And so it's a, it's a well-used facility. There's, and the fairgrounds facility gets utilized for different animal events and 4H events a lot. So I think that their desire to build or have a master plan for that and, you know, whether or not they want some portions of that in the future, I think that's certainly something that, that we would, you know, kind of expect them to drive and tell us because it's something that they've programmed that function.
I think it's just from my perspective, since I'm leaving the commission, I do appreciate the efforts over the years of these three governmental entities to work together and serve the entire community and shift and share land. And, you know, that's unusual, I think. And I think it, I know it's not without some pain occasionally, but it is a good model for us to all to see our governments cooperating as we want people to cooperate when we have a need in the community. And I, I can see that the county hasn't made a lot of changes to Seco over the years. The, I think Potorf, the rodeo area, they're talking about how those facilities have aged. And so, so they're looking at some upkeep costs or the possibility of moving to a new location with a new fairgrounds. And I think they opened the, they, they did talk with K State. And so I think they're exploring all of the possibilities that are open. And that's what they should be doing. It's what we should be doing. We have, have had for, Seco was new, really new when I moved here. That's 50 years ago. And I was just fascinated by the wonderful park. I lived at Heritage Ridge the first year I lived here. And it was just beautiful. And there was so much activity. There were ball games every evening and people loved that park. So I know there, there's more that can be done. And we're just doing it, we're going to be doing it with a little bit smaller space, maybe. We're not going to be spreading out in big ways like, you know, when you have an unlimited amount of land. But I think we have a mandate with our sales tax that we need to pay attention to. And our sales tax doesn't include the Aquatic Center. And so that's clear. We do have other parks that, you know, that are options. And so this shifting, and it's good for us to have these conversations. I appreciate the, the need to do it. And I appreciate your preparation to do that.
I think you're on the right track and I agree with one about the ball parks.
Alright, next item?
Alright, just another schedule item. The MRC luncheon is November 1st at the Sheraton, if you're interested in that. And that was all the announcements I really had. If you want to look at the planning chart, we're trying, again, to keep election night a little bit small. So it's not so busy. The, the general agenda items that I think are still on track to be beyond the agenda are some of what Bill talked about tonight with the FEMA grant for Garden Grove, as well as an amendment to the agreement with National Church Residences for that buyout. And as well as we are asking for authorization to select relocation specialist to help us with that relocation effort of those residents. So that's one item. That's really the only, a general agenda item that we have right now. On the consent agenda, we've got several second readings. We got some, some bid awards. We've got recreation concessions contract for POP and sodas. And then we've got two interlocal agreements, one with Riley Rural Water District and one with Potawatomi Rural Water District for Blue Township. So where we wholesale our supply of water. I'm anticipating that those will stay on. They have moved once though, so maybe not. Don't be surprised if they don't. We've got some time to work, work on them. The design, anticipating an agreement coming back for the design services for the Sunset Zoo African Plains and Americas exhibits. And that also the agreement from the Sunset Zoo Trust that's going to help fund that particular endeavor, as well as a recommendation for a consultant on the Flynn Hills Discovery Center stepping into the Prairie exhibit that they've got grant funding and foundation support for. Got a lease purchase of a brush vehicle, brush truck for the fire department. And then want to, talked a little bit previously about our, expanding our on-call services for professional services, primarily in the Public Works Engineering Division, to expand some of the things we've been doing for quite some time, which we think have worked out well. And then also an associated request for qualifications for those expanded on-call services. With the 21st then, things pick back up again. And we got a couple of public hearings that we're contemplating, assuming they'll stay on this schedule. First reading to amend the TIP district, which we've talked about previously in Aggieville. And also for some budget amendments for some greater revenue and expenditures than we had originally intended for or planned for. We also have some general agenda items, the rezoning of the, no more PUD. So this is up at Claflin in Hilton Heights by the Islamic Center. Some of you may recall, they did a PUD with some apartments and some other things. And there have some changes that they want to make to that PUD. That's currently scheduled for the planning board on November 9th. We have some MDC amendments. Obviously, we've been, those are some of the things since we've adopted the MDC that we're bringing back to you for amendment to clarify. And as we've gone through that document and through its implementation, we'll have the recommendations, funding recommendations from the Community Support Funds Advisory Board for you that evening. So we can get some feedback and prepare the actual contracts to execute in December. And then want to have a discussion with you about the headquarters fire station lease. So I think we're getting down to getting that pretty well, close to completion. And we just want to make sure you're, it's in line with some of the discussions we've had with you previously. And Wyatt's got to ratify some TIP notes and then proposing some community development fees. We spoke to these a little bit during the budget process of updating and keeping up. Some of these fees haven't been changed in a long time. So kind of keeping up with some of those different fees for services. And then a contract amendment for some professional engineering services on North Campus Corridor. And then more Parks and Rec, Streeter concessions contract for concession services in Parks and Rec, Final Platte, and those animal ordinances that Wyatt just covered starting off. And that's all the legislative items. Work session wise-
On the 21st, on the 21st, I'll be traveling. I should be able to be on Zoom for that.
Okay. Thanks for letting us know. Thanks. So it'll be, I guess we could do, we have our preferences teams, but we can, we can figure out.
No, we can do teams. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Zoom is the generic nowadays, so.
Gotcha.
Kind of like Kleenex.
Alright, work session again. Nothing next week. On the 5th Tuesday, right now we're open on the 14th. Might have something we stick in there. I know Commissioner Haddas all plans to be gone. And I don't know whether, he knows whether we're able to have availability to zoom in or not.
We're teams in either, for that matter.
We're teams in, there you go. Then on the 28th work session, we are looking at covering some policy resolution changes with you on change orders and some of our contract amendments that we do in light of some of our purchasing and other policy provisions that we've made some adjustments to over time. Then we've kind of held off on some of the other items. We may have some things that crop up, trying to decide whether to move forward with some of these or to wait till the new commission is seated before we cover too much. So.
Ron, I-
That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. I wanted to ask you about, it's on November 7th is the last item. And it is the selection of a relocation specialist for Garden Grove. We, because this is a FEMA buyout, the city has to do, has to fund the relocation specialist? Is that, how do we, how should we interpret that?
So I believe that's part of our amendments with National Church Residences as well, for them to participate in some of that as well. So, but that was something that we hadn't done a lot of. But because it is a federal grant, we do have to provide some assurances that the folks have a place to go to as part of that process. And that, that responsibility is on us. And is Stephanie in the room?
Not anymore.
Commissioner, Commissioner, the, we wouldn't want NCR to be responsible for even overseeing a relocation specialist. We, the city, as a recipient of the grant, have to ensure those residents are relocated. So it's either it falls on city staff or we hire a relocation specialist to ensure those federal guidelines are met with the relocation. There are-
So there's money in the FEMA grant to cover the relocation specialist?
Those are specifics that are part of the agreements that are at their desks right now. We're waiting to hear back from on all the terms.
Okay.
As soon as those terms are negotiated, they'll be on that agenda. I'll be surprised if it is on the 7th, but it might be. We got a week there to work yet, but we just haven't heard back from NCR to the degree-
I'm not objecting, I'm just asking.
Yep. No, it's a good question because internally, we had the same question. We didn't anticipate this because they anticipated moving a lot of their tenants to the development downtown, which Aaron is going to be back in front of you all talking about that property soon too.
So what, do they have to be relocated to a similar discounted subsidized housing type of thing?
Yeah, they're, they could end up even being outside of the community because those units and the rents that they pay are so discounted that the availability of those may not even be in Manhattan.
And with the Housing Authority, with Carlson Plaza offline?
Yeah.
I mean, there's a shortage of that low-income housing here in the community.
It's one of those things where-
It's not one thing, it's a bunch of things.
Right. You would love to delay it, but then you would hate to have an event. It's, you've got the grant and the feds are ready for us to spend that money to buy this property out to eliminate the exposure. But at the same time, there's, it's not a great opportunity and a time to relocate those tenants.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we've got to see what Aaron comes up with. If we can get that building, we can save those, they're called like golden vouchers that, and get them in there. I mean, that's the ultimate is what we want to get.
That's exactly back to the conversation we had in here a couple of years ago, exactly, John.
But all those tenants are still in that building?
Well, the numbers have, they are lower, yes.
It's not a full house anymore.
Correct. So there's, but we need to do our due diligence to make sure they are relocated appropriately.
Got it.
And this is one of the flooded properties from 2018.
Correct.
So we're, there are still tenants there. And that elevator didn't work for six months. And there were handicapped people up top. I mean, it was just an untenable-
In the first floor, I don't even think anybody could occupy it.
Now, uh-uh.
Right. So you've got people above, I mean, again, they're just real challenges with the site. We shouldn't let it go. We've got this grant. We should really follow through. So we'll see where NCR's at.
Okay.
Got it. Alright, any other questions about the agenda items Ron's talked about? Alright, what else you got, Ron?
That's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Alright, Ron, when you got-
I've got three, three quick items. One, you know, Gary Olds mentioned this thing about public comment a couple of weeks ago. And I thought about that. And to me, it makes sense because, you know, the public can only come here and give us grief 12 times out of the year. And we probably should change it to every legislative session. In fact, I'm open to having it every city commission meeting. Because things come up and, you know, we talk about transparent government, you know, give people the chance to talk. I mean, we've got a time limit on it. And, you know, I understand it could be a problem if 100 folks showed up. But if that happens, then, you know, we have to deal with it that night. But I would think the commission would, would maybe consider that on a future agenda, you know, changing that. Because I think it was a good, good suggestion that he made. The other point, you know, I keep driving by the old Anderson fire station. And I'm curious as to what our plans are. Are we going to, we going to sell that property? Are we going to use that property?
Eventually sell it. I think we'd like to wait for the opportunity to leverage the most out of that property that we can. We think that's probably an adjacency potential. That adjacency potential isn't right now. And if we're interested in selling it without considering the adjacent property owner, we need to talk about what we're going to do in the future at Reith and Anderson. It's a signalized intersection right now. We've seen plans and studies to bring Reith and Anderson into more of a roundabout that could accomplish taking away all the cross-traffic, put a median down the middle and use the roundabout to get east and west to where you don't have to necessarily cross-traffic and make turns. There's a lot of potential, but if you're going to do a roundabout at that intersection, that site becomes part of the equation, as does probably other property and its adjacency to the west. So two items, I guess I would throw out caution in putting that product on the, the market today. One, I do think there's opportunity financially for the adjacent owner to redevelop at some point. He's been in here and talked with you all several times. We're not, we're not receiving any inquiries or interest right now. But two, what is the fate and future of that intersection? And how are we going to accomplish all the open driveways from Reith to South Child in terms of just traffic cutting and turning left across each other and avoiding some of that? We did that, if you recall, North Manhattan to 11th Street on Anderson, on Blumenton, actually. We put that median down the middle. It, it, it does prohibit a lot of cross-traffic and turning and accidents. We may, we may need to be looking in that direction for Anderson as well.
Okay, I was just interested in, you know, long-term plan. So, you know, if we get to that mid-year, that would be nice.
We've, we've put money into that since we closed it as a fire station, I think. I just would like us not to sink any more money into it, knowing that we're going to be disposing of it.
Yeah, if we do anything with it, Commissioner, it'd be storage, just some things. We put that shed there. We put that metal building there a few years ago.
We've improved it a lot.
Probably about 10 years now.
Yeah.
But yeah.
A lot of concrete.
It's, it's something we're just, from a storage perspective right now for Parks and Rec, get some materials out there and stored for the use at Annenberg.
And they need it, I know. There's no big place for them to headquarter out of, out there that's, that's close.
Is there any thoughts still about that bridge over Wildcat Creek hooking up with South Wreath? Is that?
No. And and when we made that connection to Miller Parkway to scenic, it really took away the necessity to have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll stop thinking about that at all?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, my last point, I get you know, people still talking about daycare. And and I know we closed, you know, the city was running that daycare out there at the zoo. And it it just wasn't something we needed to be in the business of. But but the facility's still designed. I mean, we've got all the little people chairs and all those kind of things there. And I was just curious, would it be worth looking into maybe contracting that out? If somebody's interested in 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 running a daycare there where they would use our facility and you know, pay us to lease it? Is that worth looking at? Or is that too difficult?
It could be. I know the chamber, Natalie Gordon, Matt Crocker are really exploring this accelerator idea. This is potentially to be built on property next to the hospital. They've secured multimillion dollar grants, are going after more. This accelerator is a place where folks can come and actually learn and and establish daycare providers who can then spin off either into a private building or their own personal home. I think that opportunity is phenomenal. If it comes to fruition as it's envisioned, I think it can be duplicated throughout the country. It's it's something that's fairly is really unique. It wouldn't surprise me if they approached the commission about participation in that. It's something to to consider. But back to the zoo, could it be contracted out potentially? We haven't been approached, to my knowledge. I don't know if Wyatt, if you're aware of anybody approaching us to use that facility. But max capacity, we were at.
I think it's 20.
20?
24.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that space, I'm not aware of anyone approaching the city with that type of proposal. That space where Zoo Sprouts was has been repurposed for some other zoo programming opportunities. Not to say that it couldn't go back to the type of use you're talking about. But we are utilizing that space for other education animals and other educational programming. So it's something that we could explore with the zoo if there's interest in.
Yeah, I just don't think anybody may approach us. I mean, if we said, hey, it's available, you might get some takers. And I'm and I just know that we invested money to, you know, put in, you know, all the requirements for the daycare. And I'm not sure we're fully utilizing that. I know we repurposed it, but it just seems like maybe that's wasted space. And you know, with everybody saying, hey, there's a shortage of daycare, maybe that's the way the city can help out the shortage without us running into more tax dollar expense.
Yeah, and we could look at those memos that we wrote you all. There's just a real concern from administration's perspective of tax dollars and daycares. Those little treasures that parents drop off are a very high priority. The people they leave them with, they want to make sure treat their treasures in a very appropriate way. It's a difficult place to put a city employee. And I'm not defending the employee. It's just the environment that's expected of it. I don't I mean, you don't have to go very far into the school district and realize there's a system in place because of all the sensitivities folks have about leaving their children for nine to 10 hours in a place in a day. And kudos to our daycare providers. But I do think there's a reason there's an issue, not only in Manhattan, but nationwide. There's just a ton of expectations that go into it. Recruiting, retaining, and paying our people appropriately to provide that service for 20 people. I think we came to the conclusion that was a very.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. And I'm not I'm not saying we should get back into it.
Yes. And where you're headed, I'm with but just back to this, where's the city's role here? Yeah.
Well, I'm sure the lawyers would say, even if if it's our facility, even though we're leasing it to somebody else, as soon as there's a problem, they're coming after the city because that's where the deep pockets are. And so it may, yes.
And so maybe it's not, you know, worth further exploring. But I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah. And I I just brought up what the chamber's doing and what Matt and Natalie are doing because that is an effort that I think welcome the city's participation and support.
Yeah, and maybe maybe they can use that facility as part of their training. And that would be, I think, excellent use of it also.
Yep.
That's all I've got.
All right, Jim, something else?
I'd like maybe Wyatt can just visit a minute about Annenberg. I know that when I first was elected, one of the biggest decisions I ever had to make was to turf the soccer field there. I think it was $2 million. It was just this huge thing. And it's served us well. It's getting close to the 10-year life, I think, of turf. And so but I'm wondering, I talked with a student the other day who told me that they have their soccer program is being moved off of that space and that it's being turned over to Ball Field. And so I wasn't aware. And I'm sure there's a request coming to re-turf. So it's just helpful to know what what the what the department is doing.
You want me to go or you want to go?
I don't want to be surprised by a room full of people.
You can leave your mic on, too. We can tag team this one. So the the program that is that you're talking about is a flag football program that is being offered currently on the on the turf. The turf on Soccer Field One was also striped for football. It has the football lines on it. And so they've Parks and Rec is utilizing that space for that activity right now. And those during those nights for those for that period of time, the the soccer clubs that have historically used that turf field on those nights have been offered other space. And I know there's been a lot of communication between Aaron Stewart, Director of Parks and Rec, and Chris Curtis and the program staff with those various user groups to try to manage that situation. It is not a the the flag football program is not a 365-day-a-year program. And so I think as it ends, and I and I don't know the exact dates, but as it ends, obviously, you know, it'll be available for other other programming.
Because it wasn't that long ago that there was this huge rumor that flag football was being eliminated. That was last fall, a year ago. So it's I I just don't I'm not I don't have a child in the program.
Yeah.
So I'm not familiar with.
Our flag football numbers are up.
I bet.
And Wyatt's accurate. The the soccer teams and the soccer programs had used that facility for quite a while, had become very used to using that turf field and having access to a a field that really regardless of the weather, is ready for play, which is why we built it. And they got moved for to to grass in adjacency.
Are soccer numbers down then?
No, no.
You said flag football.
Flag football is just up. Their numbers are are a lot higher than they were previously.
Because there weren't very many spaces in flag football, I didn't think, a year ago.
Yeah, flag football was being played at Annenberg, Griffith, even out at Sico in the outfield, the blue, throughout the last five, seven years. So they had not been using the turf. And I think they wanted to integrate them into the turf fields. And in doing so, it's displacing the soccer, which it's upset them.
I just one, I just didn't know anything about it. So I appreciate.
Yeah, understood.
Appreciate knowing.
Yeah, you get used to using something and you think you're always going to be available for you to continue to use it. And if.
Hasn't it always been a soccer field? No?
No, and as Wyatt pointed out, it was striped for both. And it'd been used by both for practices.
Okay.
Games for football, they had moved around. Like I said, all those other venues. And they wanted to give it more of a a use this season. I know Aaron and Chris will reevaluate the usage. But for the most part, it was soccer practice. It wasn't games. And these were flag football games that they wanted to program for the turf.
And also, there's there's lights on that field.
Yeah.
There's lights on all the other.
Absolutely.
Soccer.
Yeah, that was the big thing. They they lost the ability for the lights, especially now with time changing, you know. So.
All right, anything else?
Does anybody want to mention the Veterans Day Parade and the details about that or?
I'm going to be gone. That's why I didn't bring it up. But go ahead. If you guys want to write in it and do your thing again.
Well, I assume, you know, it's on Friday, the 10th. Veterans Day is the 11th. And I assume we're going to use Old Engine One again. And and I will put the flags on it and decorate it as usual. So I'll be there if no one else is.
There you go. Ron, anything else?
I I don't have anything else, Mayor. And I'm pretty sure they've reserved Old Engine One. And you should have gotten information from either the Veterans Coalition or our office on where you need to report for those. And then also the reminder for homecoming. I think several of you are participating in K-State's homecoming parade and festivities as well. So.
All right, when you coming home?
Look at your mail folder. Those should be there.
When you coming home?
Sunday.
Sunday. All right, very cool. Somebody organize a parade. No, I'm kidding.
There you go.
All right. Anything else? All right. If not, does there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn the October 24, 2023 city commission work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Haddas Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Meeting adjourned.